Yep, I think the only other thing I mentioned is it had an org chart and various roles. I'm not sure all of them exist, one which would have been helpful and I think we talked about it, was the notion of having some sort of HR slash management effectiveness role, especially since a lot of the feedback we got that folks that are at the department head level or are their potential management roles, having some support within the organizational structure to help them grow would be useful. Two other things I'd mention is, what's it specifically here? And I'm not sure it was anywhere else, but, and this came up in a discussion we had as part of the implementation committee is who owns the vision, the ongoing vision for the school? Is it the ED, is it the board, or is it somehow us working together? Or the stakeholders who are responsible for the ongoing vision of the school? So that's a, it's a topic of discussion I think we need clarity around because when we were talking about it, we really didn't know the answer to that question. So something to consider.
Yeah, that's a very good question.
Yeah, something really from the middle. The other comment I would make is as we're going through this, I think you just great job, thank you, explaining, you know, this is a initial document, but there is a charter which is a one pager. You know, I listened to this conversation, we were bringing up really great points about things we should be talking about. How do we make this stuff actionable? Should we ultimately have some sort of, not that there's the charter, there's this document which is kind of archaic, but something that we're working off of that we're, and maybe that's part of the strategic plan where we keep talking about these particular topics which are critically important so we can keep it actionable and going moving forward. I know we've been really busy this last year, but-
What's that accountability, right?
Scott just mentioned the strategic plan and I think I agree with that is that these things are things that, you know, may be implementable, certainly worth considering over time. And I think they do form, you know, questions that are addressed in the strategic plan.
Can I ask for a quick clarification from Sarah on our timeline for the accountability plan which lays out our next five years, right? What's that timeline for that?
We're supposed to be working on that now, this year.
But what's the, what's the due sort of due date on that?
This, I would say this August week one.
And so from my perspective, again, I'm new to the accountability plan component, but to me, if that's laying out our next five years, that's why I feel a little bit anxious about the strategic plan because I would think that those need to dovetail and go together and not clear about the nuances of what the state's looking for in the accountability plan. But to me, it just seems that they would just be completely aligned moving forward. And so since we have to get that in play, I think some of these questions will need to be addressed this, this spring.
Well, I think the accountability plan, so these are goals that you set and agree to work towards with the state. So you're on the hook. I think that that's probably somewhat different than what a board strategic plan would be because there's a penalty if you don't meet what you say to the state, I think. You know, you may not get your next charter versus a strategic plan. If you fail in your strategic plan and the school's doing great, it doesn't impact your ability to have the charter going forward. So, but I agree there. Go ahead, Sarah.
I was just going to say that there are 42 criteria that school performance is based on and we're supposed to, can't address all of them, so they ask us to pick some. And over the years, things have changed and this last charter term, the accountability was more on individual growth for students, where at the beginning it was more the competitions and things. And now I think it's going in the right direction, there's more of that. And it is more of a, an academic situation. So the department chairs, the executive director, those people talk about these things and build it. And they usually come out with, let's say, 10 points that they want to measure progress. So it's really you saying what's important to you and to the school and to the mission. And there is a guideline for exactly how you're supposed to put together the accountability and it does change from year to year, they have different guides, but it's pretty much the same. And so the school leaders will put together, the academic leaders, the board, the administration, they put together, because there are the three areas of the accountability. The key elements to the charter, for the, you know, the key elements, we should say, so don't say just the charter. And then there's the viability, which is the board, the governors, and then there's the academic success. The academic success has always been our highlight, I think, and the other areas are good. But it will be based on those elements. And so it's really just getting it all together, figuring out what's important now. So it is, it does dovetail, as Mary Ann says, with your goals that you want now. But it really is a lot of the school working with that, with your help. And I think this will be the first year that's really been all of you together. And I see a group in the accountability plan coming along, but that's pretty much-
The last plan, we weren't even a full functioning institution at the time.
It was, it was, it was.
Well, what I meant by that is we were six through 12, we give what I mean.
Yes, they were.
No, we were six through-
Five through, five years.
Six through 11.
Four, yeah, I was gonna say, we just get graduating in the first year.
2011, right, first year.
Four, three.
And it was built that year, that year. But it wasn't first year.
All right. I'll be seeing my five minutes. It was fun to go down memory lane and look at the charter. One of the views and things in there was that we were gonna sign a five-year lease for our facility, so that was interesting to see in there. Commentary in there around providing transportation services, folks outside of the district was in there. And actually, the concept of doing fundraising to help cover those transportation costs was also something that was in there that I thought about was interesting.
School-wide fundraising to cover out of district.
Board trustee being responsible for the finances, passing audits, those things are in there. If we're doing, being compliant with the accounting standards, all things that we're doing at this point in time. The book software, that is the software that we use, monthly financial reporting, all of that is in there. One of the things that was noted in there was the three-year plan for finances. We had a five-year plan when we were looking at the board's goals from last year. So that was in there, something that we should still work to. Metrics was talked about in there. So again, that's simply the third place that metrics was talked about is to look at there. And then the last piece that was in there related to dissemination of best practices. And that was really flagged as an easy responsibility of post-year-one, easy responsibility, disseminating the wonderful things that the school was doing was highlighted in there. It's something that we don't seem to have had an opportunity to do at this point in time. And being maxed out on enrollment and having waiting lists to mile along and things like that. If, if things ever do settle down, that's certainly something that we'll be thinking about and looking at. That was it.
Very good.
All right. Some great thoughts coming out of that. I hope that was useful and I hope working with one of your fellow board members to kind of review this was useful to get to know them as well. I'm not sure who Mike is. Who is Mike?
Mike Glass.
Mike Glass.
I said I just done that show too.
I was having a brain. Yeah, Mike, so Mike is-
Poor Mike, poor Mike.
He's actually going to the Super Bowl.
That's where he's going.
I was gonna talk him out and say where he was.
So Mike Glass, I apologize for the wreck. He's been a great addition too.
A great addition and did contribute to this analysis. Sorry.
So I, I think that we should sort of look at the notes that we take from this and figure out if those somehow bleed into a strategic planning initiative as well as accountability and how that those two things that we really ought to be doing in accountability will get done because Sarah's got it. But how do we, how do those overlap? Those are something to tackle. Any other comments to close that topic?
How will we, how will we follow, how will we follow that up?
Let's, let's talk about it in the next board meeting because we're gonna have the notes and we'll have kind of maybe somebody can summarize what we think are ideas worth moving forward and into a, into a strategic planning initiative. I'm not sure. Let's, let's make it a topic for the next board meeting.
Who was on the strategic?
It was Chris and I and Pauline. We were going to, created the task force which was ourselves. And we had one meeting to talk about things and then things kind of got ugly. We didn't do anything after that. I went back and looked at those notes, actually. So we, we do need to, you know, think about, so we're gonna think about a little later whether we have a strategic plan, a task force to kick off, whether we have that in mind. So we'll start talking about that here in the next hour or so. So from a timing perspective, we should have been 70 minutes into it and we're 90.
We're 10 minutes off.
10 minutes.
Because we started 10 minutes late.
And we started, we have some time. So we're doing okay. I do think we ought to continue to keep us timed because, you know, the very, the most important thing that we can get out of this meeting is what are we gonna try to do in the next twelve? So, and that's at the very end, so we wanna keep moving through. And I don't think, I don't think we wanna stay, you know, much past lunch. I'm hoping everybody else wants to do something. So thanks for helping to keep us on time. So our next topic was, Dr. DeMello was gonna give the state of the state, followed by Pauline and I talking a little about the State of the Union, if you will. And we asked Dr. DeMello to really, you know, help remind us of what's going on at the school that is of utmost urgency. And some things that may be longer term too, so.
Plug that in or you wanna just open up your email address?
Oh, you got, you sent me an email.
Just send it, you can open it just in case it doesn't connect right away.
Yeah, okay.
So Dr. DeMello, you have 10 minutes. You have five minutes.
So 20 to, I was gonna, watch, that's good, I'll be watch, speed, six slides. How much do I have?
You have 10 minutes.
10, I'm on, I'll get you back on track, ready? But don't start till he does, hits that.
It's on Craig, it's on Craig at this point. I feel depressur Craig.
It'll take him 10 minutes to get this thing up.
It doesn't like-
Well, I'm not gonna starve her time and that was, we're on the same program.
No, it's, that's my machine.
Just try to quickly plug in. Oh, 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 yeah, why don't you send me, oh. Yeah, it keeps kicking you off for some reason. Let's plug, let me have a quick go.
I just, I just had maybe the two-minute bio break, right?
Uh, seven, eight, nine.
We won't take this out of your time.
Yeah, we can, let's take a bio break next. That's, I think, we do leave that a break.
So I don't know what's now happening.
It's just, it's working.
Oh, there we go. Come on, come on. Oh, yeah?
You should take five right now, Craig.
Yeah, let's get, except what happens if I miss the bio break with it and I'm in trouble.
Do you need a bio break?
I, I did, yeah. So, let me, why don't I just talk, why don't I just talk?
Okay.
Oh, you got it?
It's on screen.
Let's see, here, there's yours, let's see. Let me start anyway. Unless you wanna do it quick, what do you wanna do?
Well, let's go ahead.
Oh, okay, so, overview, oh, there we go, perfect.
Free, if I go into present, I'm not gonna go into presenting.
All right, that's okay.
Go right ahead.
Uh, yeah, it would be helpful for us to get a correct placement.
Just make a paper down, go on the presentation board, probably on the right. Yeah, there you go.
Okay, so, next slide please. So what I'm gonna talk about quickly is the state of the school, mentioning some areas of growth as well as ways in which we can build on our bright spots. Then a vision for the school and then finally some keys to implementation. Next slide please. You're, you're on the right slide now, areas for growth. So some areas, one we know is cultural healing. We have a, a lot more work to do there. I think we've made some progress, but we have more to do. Next is increasing teacher engagement and doing that through professional development and also engaging them in planning what is our second decade going to look like. And we're actually, have already started this month, having teachers working collaboratively by departments, talking about what are our values? What is it that we want students to be able to have as values when they graduate, leave AMSA? And what is it that we have for our core, core values? So we're starting some of those conversations. We also want to increase student ownership of learning.
I'm sorry, I have a question. So for number two, for increased teacher engagement, you, you mean increasing teacher engagement with sort of school-wide issues?
Well, more, I would say more focused on curriculum and instruction.
Okay, but not like student-teacher?
For engagement.
Yeah, not, not teacher engagement with the students, but they're sort of, yeah, yeah.
Yes, them engage, sorry, engaging them in the process, teacher empowerment in the process, increasing that. And by engaging them in more professional development that stimulates new and fresh ideas that gets them excited and passionate that they can then come back and have deeper conversations. And, and therefore puts them in a, in a better place to be planning and participating in the strategic planning process, right? Increased student ownership of learning, you know, more and more we're hearing this, a lot of the things that we're teaching and preparing students for now, those jobs aren't even going to exist. Which is all new jobs that are gonna be created. We need to make sure that we're giving them foundational skills and part of that is helping them to find their talents and their passions at an earlier age, which is why there's such a breakout of so many academy models and movement back towards career and technical education concepts and models and partnering with businesses. And so I think us moving in that direction would be an area we could grow. And then expanding the definition of achievement. I think right now we're tending to be measured and, and recognizing where we fall in achievement on how many AP classes we're offering, what our AP scores are, what our MCAS scores are, what our SAT scores are. And we wanna keep those at a very high level, but I think we also wanna expand our achievement to be measuring and taking a look at leadership. Are our students taking on leadership roles? Can our students collaborate and work in a flat environment? Are they digitally literate? You know, can they actually take resources and digitally and work with digital tools in a meaningful way to open up and expand their global perspectives? And, and other 21st century skills, that's really what might be by expanding the definition of achievement. And then again, clarifying our, our own values. Next please. I, I think when you wanna do something like that, a great place to start is to build on your bright spots. I threw in Switch, I don't know if any of you have read that, it's a fantastic book on, on change. And so one thing is, we have a strong curriculum already, let's continue to expand that and to grow on that and, and modernize it so that, you know, I quickly mentioned before that the, the tools that we now have versus the tools that we had when the charter application was written are quite different. I mean, just these smartphones alone put us in a whole different realm than we were 10 years ago. So we need to modernize our, our curriculum. Keep the bar set very high. We have a very caring staff who's committed to AMSA. We have students who expect to be challenged, they come here knowing they're going to be challenged. I think we have a pretty reasonable budget that we're fortunate to have compared to many other districts. I also believe that people at AMSA, the, the students and the teachers, administration have a desire to be unique and to stand out and be different. And then finally, I think by the nature of, of a charter, we also have freedom to innovate. And I think that those are all areas that we can continue to build on that already exist. And so those, I think, are some of our bright spots that I'd like to see continue to grow. Next please. So some of the key points for our vision is to ensure that we have a modern education leading to success in a high-tech world. That's with our current mission. Based on our current mission, I would just mention down the road that we give some thought, and you've sort of alluded to this in your presentation, Scott, is getting clarification between a mission and a vision. You know, a vision is where you want to go. The mission is how you're going to get there. And I'm not sure, I, I think oftentimes people use the word interchangeably and I think we should be clear about distinguishing those as we start to move forward. Design and implement a senior capstone project. I think that's important because what I see is more engagement with business partnerships and, and having our students do real-world activities so that when they leave here, they actually already have made some contributions and, and feel more significant and had opportunities for more authentic environments than we are currently presenting it with. And then promote replication of AMSA. And I, I agree with Tom, it's, it's hard to, to take, you know, the, the concept with charters is take it and replicate it somewhere, but every community is so different. I'm not sure that that's entirely feasible at all times. However, there are many aspects, individual aspects, that we can replicate. And in fact, what we've already charged the department heads with is what is going to be unique in your department? How can you take something like that and start moving out and asking for replication? So we're already, have charged the department heads with coming up with that and looking at moving forward, you know, can we get more of our folks speaking at conferences? Why don't we have our educators out more, talking at local and, and national conferences? Because I think we have that capability. Next please. So what are some of the keys to implementing this? Well, one is relationship building and getting an increased sense of community. Redefining our achievement, I've already talked about that. Global education, having a, a more of a community discussion about it. We have cultural diversity components that are in our charter application or part of our, our core. But I would like the conversation, what does that really mean to provide a global education? And get more clarity, not just with the staff, but with the whole AMSA community about what that really means and looks like. Teacher leadership and engagement, I've addressed that already. Student, student ownership, I've addressed. A one-to-one, and there's a, a leading educator, Alan November, some of you may have heard his name. And what I like about it is one-to-one implies, you know, everybody should have one of these. But that in and of itself doesn't do anything, you know? I like his concept of calling it one-to-world because then this, it, it reemphasizes that this is just the tool because what we really are talking about is giving our students access to the world and giving our kids access to expanding their, their perspectives and, and having more engagement and more understanding of modern digital literacies than we are anything else. And then finally, culture, climate and communication, just continuing to foster positive culture, both with how people feel, but also, I think Alice once mentioned, the, the components of just even visual feeling comfortable. I always use the analogy of, you know, Disney, not to give them a plug, but, you know, just walking in, there's a certain good feel because they visually put as much into it. There's all the stimuli from all different directions tries to hit all of your senses and giving you a, a certain feeling. And I think that's an important part of, of setting, of toning culture as well. So, I, I'm, am I good? I'm done?
So I would ask, go ahead, Chris.
I just have a question about replication. So I've not seen it defined anywhere, but I've seen it talked about in different ways. And what I'm taking from it is replication could be what the word replication means or it could be any development of best practices that we effectively share with others.
Yeah, I, my understanding from attending some of, and we attended them actually together, some of the, the particular workshops that they offer or, or sessions on charter schools is the, taking one model and being able to replicate it and bring it to other communities and expand the number of charter schools. I'm not sure we're there yet to be prepared to do that. However, we have already best practices that we can. And so in fact, we are starting that in some respects. We took our 1080 program, which happens to be an after-school, but we took that program. And now we're helping other schools understand how to do that. I think there's lots more opportunities. And I was actually talking to somebody yesterday about maybe partnering with some urban schools like a Chelsea or something, that has, can help with us with some diversity components that they can bring to us and we can bring some components to them. So you have some replication opportunities, but you also have some different types of partnering and engagement opportunities.
So I'd like to put, put a placeholder on this for a later discussion because I think when we're talking about replication, and I think of that as dissemination. And I think, I'm, I'm not sure our strategic goal should be to replicate. There should be other AMSAs around or even necessarily that the curriculum that we invented gets plopped in somewhere else, but that we are effectively changing the way kids in our whole area and beyond are being educated.
I think it's across the whole spectrum.
And I think we need to get explicit about that and that's a strategic focus.
So, so I'd like to build on Chris's question from a historical perspective because what's confusing to me as a board, a new board member, is that I get a sense that, that we have typically looked at replication as being sort of this, there ought to be a second after. As opposed to my wider reading about what charter school replication means is dissemination of best practices, which is the way Chris, so I'm just, I would ask, and I'm sure it has to be answered right now, but I'd ask the question, what have, what has been our understanding of the board? As a board, what replication?
I don't think we've ever created consensus. That's not true.
Just a quick comment, that number three up there under global education, for me, really resonated as I read your mad notes with the updates to the board on a weekly basis. And when I saw, yeah, very helpful. When I saw that one relative to, I think it was a seventh grade class Skyping with the scientists in Antarctica, and I just began to think about, well, we could do that all over the world. We, and that was something that didn't exist when I was in the seventh grade, being able to actually be in a classroom environment.
Nobody had been to Antarctica when you were in.
Or being in Brazil or Puerto Rico or any of these places and having this global reach. I was like, wow, you know, that, that's, that's amazing.
Pretty powerful.
Yeah.
I don't wanna drag this out or anything, but I, you said that, I, I didn't feel that we were there yet with all the reputation and stuff, but I actually thought we were working with the Jacobson Foundation on this exact topic. Am I wrong?
It's a little different, yeah.
Okay, I, I don't wanna drag this out.
But it's part, it's part, it's part of what they looked at last year.
They did not, yeah, when they met with us this year.
Yeah, it's, it's not really their goal, I don't think. So Chris, you're gonna have the last comment and then we're gonna go to brain for five minutes.
We'll get these slides?
Sure. They're part of the public record.
Well, we'll get this slide.
And as we speak.
I'll send it to you then.
If you send it to me, I'll have it posted with these, with our minutes, we'll be posting it.
Beautiful, thanks.
All right, so let's take, let's take five minutes.
Thank you.
That'd be like 9:53.
Are you, should have been the-
He did quiet, how are we? No, just last.
Just Scott, not yourself.
Around the dinner table.
The dinner table.
God, I need a sign, quiet at the dinner table.
So given you guys have 20 minutes, I'm gonna give you a 10-minute.
Okay, yeah, I actually-
She's liking that power.
I am.
Just a quick observation, I, I was gonna get us back to the tape about five minutes ago and I noticed a lot of cool conversations going on. So I said, these are people in time to talk, it's not all of it. So our next topic is, Pauline and I had a get started, really just starting to think about what the known priorities are. And, and thank you, Mary Ann, for kind of helping us to think about how, how, how you see the need for the school to evolve over time. I wrote down some notes. So I think in, in terms of a state of the union or a state of the, of the school, I just make a couple observations really quickly. I think that the board team is really becoming an exceptional organization. So thanks to all the new members, you guys, I mean, the labor that you have provided is, is amazing and should be tax deductible or something. Because it feels like a second job, I'm sure. But really, you know, the vibrancy of the board and the survivability of the board now is awesome. And a lot of people did a lot of recruiting and I don't have to name names because you know who you are. So it's great. I would say that the board function and the operations of the board are vastly matured as well. So we've got a gr, a bunch of great new people and we seem to be organized and functioning well as an operation. And I think that we're sort of ready to handle anything if we're not too exhausted. And we have some big challenges ahead. But I do think that our function and operations just over the past year, year and a half, two years, have really, I can remember a few years back, Roger, you and I and who else? Melissa, you were around. Allison and Tom, you were here for the tail end of, a long time ago. We're, we're in a much different place. But I think we all know that, you know, a tsunami hit us in May and June and hit the school. You know, we're only a small part, but there's, there's a lot going on in the school. And I think we really need to think about today, you know, how do we really focus our attention on helping with the board? And, and I think there's sort of three things that are consuming a lot of time. One, I would say that there's a bunch of legal issues. And I say issues because some of them are complaints that people have filed, legal complaints as well as within the board and the system. So there's a bunch of complaints. There's a union negotiation which is a legal issue and, and we have to pursue it as a legal issue. issue, and we got a great team on it. And we have a real estate legal issue that we're working through. And all those, you know, need to be worked through. But I kind of bucket them in one place for a reason here in a minute. And then I think that there is, there are leadership challenges within the school that are pretty daunting. That there's, you know, I think I'm going to speak pretty candidly, but there's factions that have developed in the school over the last year. And I think I've heard many faculty say the same thing, so I'm not shy of saying, but there are factions of teachers. And some would say there's factions of, you know, administrators and department chairs, I don't know, but there are factions. And I think that that has caused major fractures, you know, within the daily operations of the school, and it's really troubling. Because I think it's going to end up leading to more staff turnover, which is not what we want. And I think, and I think back to some of the culture that existed previously, which I think is really still there. We, Roger and I talked to a teacher yesterday, two days ago, about a complaint, and he talked about this culture that held the teachers together from a long time ago and how the school was formed. It was a, you know, it was a science project when it started. There was a lot of teachers who'd never taught, and there was a lot of kind of wacky professors and, you know, administration run amok, and people were trying to figure out how to get from building to building. But, you know, that startup environment really pulls teachers together. And when they weather the storm, and there was a lot of staff turnover in the early days, I mean, people just didn't show up to work. They quit, nobody knew, they were doing all kinds of crazy things in and out of the classroom. It was a bit of a circus, but that circus brought teachers together as a group. And I think that, you know, the teachers, many of the teachers remember that. And many of the parents who have been parents for a long time remember that, too. And, you know, they were willing to overlook lots of the dysfunction because I think the teachers and the administration had a tight-knit group that really bonded over that experience. So I think we need to make sure that we think of the leadership challenges in that historical, cultural life. So we have leadership challenges and try to, how do we get through this period of chaos and distrust? But I think that the culture is resolute, resilient, excuse me, and it's going to survive it. But we as a board, I think, you know, I say we have legal issues, we have leadership challenges, and then we have culture issues. And I really think that, you know, if we can figure out how whatever we do can have a positive impact on the cultural outcomes over the next 12 months, then that will be the most important thing to do. And, you know, we can view our leadership challenges through those cultural issues, and we can view our legal issues through those cultural issues. But I think, to me, it feels like, because it's not over, and it may be getting worse or maybe treading water. It's just a really good conversation that Roger and I had the other day, that, you know, how do we, how do we reassure people and convince people that the work that the board is doing is going to help the school to move forward? Because I think the school is looking for that. They're looking for that for their day-to-day leaders, but I think they're looking for a face of the board who can put together a convincing communication strategy plan that says, yeah, we're trying to help you tackle these things. Because it's, you know, at some level, it's not our job to tackle these, because they are really operational deep within the day-to-day of the school. But we need to be, figure out with the administration how we can help. And, you know, I think we're on the path to that, and Rick and others are leading that challenge. But I think as a board, we need to figure out how all of our efforts go towards helping to overcome these cultural challenges. And it's, it's not the union, and it's not all these other things that we have, it's the cultural challenge of how do we bring people together so that they, that they really trust the work environment? And I think that, you know, there's two or three factions, many of those factions and many of those people in those factions don't trust the work environment right now. So I just think we ought to think about the things that we're doing for this coming year through that, because there's a lot of things we can think about strategically, real estate, curriculum, and board language, and all these other things that we talked about. But unless we can figure out how we can help with the culture as a full board, I think we'll have missed an opportunity to bring the school through this period more quickly. So that was just sort of the keynote, if you will, to try to, you know, it's my opinion, and I've had this reinforced a couple of times, talking to Dr. Demello. She's very concerned about this, that, you know, we, she and her team keep spending a lot of time on that. But I think it's challenging for the board to figure out how we spend time in our, you know, our day-to-day board job, trying to help address these things. You know, there may be financial components that we can help with, there may be governance components. All of our committees ought to be thinking about, what do we do to help address these issues? Go ahead.
If I could make one very brief comment, I kind of echo what you're saying about how, what can we do? I think, I know a big impact for me, and I think, Chris, you would concur with this, and Scott, you were a part of it, I'm sorry, you were, Allison, in terms of when we were looking at complaints, we had to talk to a lot of people, or several people. And when you start talking, you get a much deeper sense of what's going on. And we started seeing there's, there's these deep factions. And so I would encourage folks, you know, we've got those roundtables going on, but any opportunity you have to talk more with folks, it gives you a completely different perspective. And I, so, you know, one of our things about transparency and visibility, I think it's really critical, folks have opportunities to really speak with others, teachers, parents, et cetera, to really get a sense of what's going on. And that is an action that people respond to, too, because sometimes they look at board as just a board, but once it becomes personal and you know the people and so forth, you start viewing us differently as a board. So I think getting out there more is going to be very helpful.
Just sort of piggybacking on that is that, to re-stress that some of the one-to-one are smaller group, because the roundtable meetings, I think, have a definite value, but recognizing that some people are not as comfortable in a larger group commenting, and you get a different flavor or not quite as much clarity as you would on, in smaller groups or even an individual basis.
So, so since we're making short comments, I'll say that, you know, so I dug out a book that I'd read a long time ago called Speed of Trust. It's pretty well-known, it's one of the bestselling books. And it talks about, you know, talks about the dynamics of trust and, you know, sort of draws the analogy between trust and confidence. You know, if you trust people, it's because you have confidence in them. And it talks about two aspects of this, character and competence. And I think the reason why the comments like, well, Rick may, you know, come out, is because it's a lot easier to assess and feel more comfortable about somebody's competence and their character when you're in a one-on-one conversation, because then you have that give and take. I think, you know, by contrast, some of the ways that we set up the board interactions, you know, during our regular board meetings, tends to create a distance there. And I understand why we do it in the context of, you know, we have business to attend to and stuff like that. But there, there is not that ability to have that interaction where you develop this greater, you know, understanding of the, you know, greater confidence about the way things are going. We may want to look at the way that we conduct our business, I guess.
Yeah, I think some roundtables are starting, which, you know, may help that. So, you know, I think so for priorities for the year, I frame them all in that, and I think that if we can focus all of our energy on culture coming here and figuring out how we have a greater impact, I think it's really important, and it's more important than anything we do, I think. I think that, you know, a big priority that we have very quickly, and it'll be done in a few months, is selecting the permanent ED. And that, you know, that, that's going to go a long way, whether it's Mary Ann or one of our other candidates. I think that will help the school to feel like there is more of a sense of permanence. And so I think, you know, we're down that path. We have a meeting Tuesday night to sort of introduce the process and the recruiter, but we're going to, we're going to need to spend a lot of time on that. But it's a short burst, I think we're going to have that done by March. I think we're lucky, middle of March, we're not in the end of March.
But once, I would, I wouldn't want to set high expectations and then fail to meet them. Like we're looking at the March-ish, and we will discuss in detail on Tuesday.
Yeah. So I think that's, that's obviously a priority.
But our goal, I think our goal is to get this done carefully and thoroughly and as quickly as possible at the same time. So I agree with the goal, I just don't want to set expectations that we fail to meet.
Yeah. So, you know, some, those are some of the priorities that we have in sort of the state of the union that are going to take a lot of time. The legal, I think, is relatively contained, so there's only a few people working on these things. With the complaints, those tend to be sort of task-driven and, you know, one or two-month duration, one or two people, not a whole lot, well, some of them are not a whole lot of work, others may take a whole lot more. The collective bargaining at this point, it's two people, and they're doing a great job. Maybe Allison and Tom, you guys can come in, you know, when does that begin to involve the whole board? We actually, the whole board becomes immersed in that. Is it ever a big activity of the board, moving through the collective bargaining?
We don't see it as ever becoming a big activity of the board. I mean, we've been tasked with getting through a contract that, that bring the entire board, the entire board to vote out.
Yeah.
And we don't, it's not going to be collaborative process.
So by the, at the point where you guys are comfortable that, you know, you have a conference and contract, bring it to the board, and, you know, it's probably a month or less of our time sort of working through it as a board.
That's right.
Yeah. So it's another well-contained activity with a short burst of entire board involvement. And I think that the facilities issues, you know, there's not a whole lot of work going on there. We do think that that'll ramp up a little bit, but by the time a trial comes about, if it does, it's the outcome of that facilities issue that could cause lots and lots of work. And it, you know, if, if we were to be victorious in our claims and, and we're, what's that? Five minutes. We're able to kind of break the deadlock and move to another facility or renegotiate, it could be a lot of work after that, maybe for many people on the board, but, you know, we don't have a timeframe for that. So right now, it's a well-contained, so I think the legal things are well-contained. The leadership, at this point, you know, I think the most important thing we're doing, and the only thing we're doing, is the ED selection. And then, you know, I think we'll end up working with the ED, whoever that may be, around the leadership function. And I think that that's an area that we can consider, you know, being more collaborative with ED around the organization of that leadership team, although it's going to be the ED's job. I think we can, we can help in that area. But it's the culture that I think that we really should think about, how can we contribute over the full year? And there's some form of things, but I think you bring up that one-on-one interaction that the board might consider, you know, other ways where we can, and I think it's, I'll air and say that, you know, it's meeting with the staff that may be the thing that helps turn the tide and bring together people. There's certainly parents that are disaffected and frustrated and angry and would like to get to know the board better, but I think, to me, it feels like if we can design mechanisms to get to know staff, and then through those interactions, how can we bring people together in support of the ED, then that's going to be a really important piece of our work.
Great, there's one more thing that I think needs to go on here for this year, which is the accountability and development of boards involved in that, and that's a cost due to the health.
It's the must-do versus the strategic one. It's not a must-do. Okay. Yeah. I agree. So any other comments of, you know, do we think this is board work, trying to help individually and collectively with culture? That's what I would think is our number one priority.
Yeah, they get it, we're working. We're supposed to help AMPSA, and I think that's part of it.
Yeah.
I can't, you can't lose sight, like, no matter what, you know, fraction you're on, I think everyone at AMPSA cares about the kids. And I think that's really the main focus that brings everyone together.
I agree, you know, and as somebody who's a proponent of lots of other subjects.
Yeah.
I like the way you've set it out, that, all right, for this year, that's what it should be about, and that should be the lens through which we look at, or one of the first lenses we look, through which we look at everything that we do. So it's, how is fundraising and development contributing to culture? How is finance and administration contributing?
Yeah.
How are we in our individual interactions? And I think that, you know, when we get to figuring out our goals for the year, everything that we do, we should assess, how is that helping to build the culture?
Well, that's a good point, Chris, and I think, you know, in the past, we, so we've come up with four or five things that are our goals for the year, and we just assessed how we did last year. And we've also then asked the committees to put together goals that are in support of those things, or committee functions. So I think if we also charge the committees with viewing all their activities and goals through the lens of culture, then I think, you know, a month from now, we come out of this planning exercise with a, with a set of goals at the board level and at the committee level that all are viewed through the same lens.
And then we have a culture measurement, I usually advise, and impact.
Yeah.
Okay. As I'm listening and trying to assess out, I think it's important, I feel like it's the support component that's really important. But what I would, that I would be fearful of for you folks is starting to think about what the roles of a board of trustees is, and then taking this on, because this, this, it expanded into the broader community. But the reality is, and there's all kinds of reasons as to why that did, why it went out towards the parents and all those things, but the, but the reality is, is this is a school-based problem. This is a, this is a staff between staff, a staff between administration and those kinds of things. And again, it, then, for all the different reasons we've heard before, it expanded into the parent community and broader community, but it's an internal problem. And I think we need to focus, me meaning myself and the team, need to focus in getting it back that we're the ones who are going to resolve this. And so I wouldn't want to feel that we're like saying that this is now a board problem. I think the board had additional cultural things that were coming from, maybe working with the broader parent community and access to the board and having conversations. That came out in the report as well. But the deep problem within the school, that cultural problem, I feel like we own that. And it really is about the board being able to support decisions and things, and Chris, you gave examples of how you can support to help with those cultural things through, you know, financial decisions and so on. But the board still has its responsibilities of, you know, the hiring, the finance, and so on, and not to go into the, you know, now, now you're having to deal with something that really does have an operational component. So I think it's going to be a careful balance, but I don't want you to feel like that this is really something that goes on to the plate of the board to that extent, because I don't feel that, that it really does. I think, I think as you're trying to clarify, somebody mentioned earlier about, you know, what are the roles and having the guidelines? It really is an internal problem that we, we need to do our own reflection internally, and we're going to do some processes in the upcoming month to help with that self-reflection around our own culture. But it, that is, there's a big component that just, it's internal. And you just want to find that, that balance.
Well, I think this is, this is a crucial conversation. Because I hear you describe some of the issues that are going on in the staff, right? You have plans to begin to move, help fix, prepare. It feels like it's an awfully big problem, and it's not your making. It's, you know, it's happened before you came here, and it, you know, it's gotten worse or stayed or improved, but it's still there pretty strongly. And I guess I would challenge, I think the board needs to figure out how to help. Now, we don't want to do it without your guidance and not in concert with you, but I think, I think it needs to be a really strong component of our execution for the year.
I want to be careful, I didn't mean to say we don't want, we, we need the help. That's why I said, it's about the support. I just don't want it to be perceived as, as that this is now a role. I just don't want it to be perceived as, as that this is now a role. I think by, by using terms like the lens from which you make decisions, or the fact that you're gonna lend support in any way you can, and that the culture component that you also focus on is the component that extends to the broader community, I think all of those. But I also believe that the, the, the school itself, the people in the school, the employees themselves, we have our own fixing, we need to, like, we, those, all of those people have to play a role in being reflective and deciding how they wanna help to contribute to fixing some of that with the support.
No, no, I just, 'cause I don't know how to, you know, I think we need to talk a lot of words or at some points, I'll raise hands, but I, I hear everything you're saying, and I think it's absolutely, probably, in a perfect world, exactly what we should be doing as the board is just supporting the ED and you at this time to help with the operations. The problem that I see is that we've got the, the department heads and the, the, the board, the, the veterans of the school that are reaching out and looking for some more external support from the board. So how do we balance that role to let them know that they are extremely important to us in the sustainability and the functioning of the school through this school year?
Sustainability is really the question, right? But that's the board's role?
Yes.
Ensuring organizational viability.
Right. Because one of the things that I'm, I'm concerned about too, Mary Ann, is if you've got department heads and leaders and long-term people that are part of the school, that have seen the school grow, that are, you know, just wonderful folks, reaching out and saying, we're concerned about the future of the school, then certainly we wouldn't want anything that would undermine that or some form of, you know, a loss of these people at a crucial time, and then try and continue running the school. So I'm holding exactly what you're saying in a perfect world, that would be wonderful, we could just step back and say, this is great, this is operations all the way through, but it's a problem that's so, you know.
But I wanna make sure that that isn't what I'm saying.
Yeah, no, I, I don't.
Yeah, I'm really talking about how you view.
Go ahead, Melissa.
Yeah.
The one thing I would comment is, if we think a few years back, I know when I joined the board, we had a lot of feedback that the board was diving into too much management, so I would just caution that we don't end up in the same place a year from now, because then we, we took actions, I think, to move away from that and to be
Absolutely.
More in a governance role, I think we've done some great work there. I think it is really that balance of how do you support and how you just, you know, how do you ensure sustainability, but you're not actually becoming involved with the management and operations.
I don't think that's what we're, we're thinking about at this point, I think we've gotten away from that, we defined our roles, I think we're operating pretty well as a board. I just, I see it as, like you said, the number one problem that we're looking at, of how we extend that support to let them know that we're not this aloof board that, you know, doesn't really know what's happening within the school itself, which is something that was, you know, was alleged against us last year, that we remained so far outside, that we were so far into governance, that we had no idea what was happening within the day-to-day operations of the school, and all of these things had arisen, all of these issues, and we were out of touch. And so, I don't want us to be in that role either, I think we need to be more focused.
So I, you know, I do see these as being usually supportive perspectives. If Mary Ann, if Mary Ann's perspective is, look, you know, the school has to fix itself, and there's some stuff that has to be done internally, I think that's a good caution because it allows us to understand there's stuff that is getting fixed.
That is going on.
I think it's also important for the board to, to say, you know, maybe we were too far away and we need to find out where that sweet spot is. Let's face it, if that sweet spot were easy to hit, we'd have hit it, okay? It's not an easy sweet spot to hit, okay? Of being involved enough that we get that feedback, that, 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 you know, the, the teachers and the students and the parents feel as though there's, there's a, there's a place for their voices to be heard on the board, but also doing it appropriately, not going against what proper board governance is. I think, I think there's a way of integrating those two perspectives towards that right sweet spot.
So Chris, I'm gonna let you talk here. We're sort of out of time on the State of the Union, but this is sort of leading into the next topic. What I, what I wanna shift to, we can have your comment, Chris, is if people feel like there's priorities for the coming year that we need to enumerate so that we can begin to think about goals for those prioritizing, let's nominate a policy to get them on the board for us. We can also continue, this, this conversation's not done about how we help on culture, but we can continue that conversation today.
So instead of one lens through which we look at everything, which is culture, there are two lenses at which we look at everything that we do, and that's, is it helping the culture and are we behaving in a way that's appropriate to board direction?
I'd like to put out there and then go back to the vision and mission that we talked about previously, and if that's a component of the culture, no, it's not, I don't want that to be a component of culture. I want that to be a separate and unique and distinct thing that's out there. I want us to, you know, define that direction of it, working with the executive director of the school, and communicate that to the world, so that they know what they're getting into, whether they're an employee or, you know, a student when they come to this school.
So you're suggesting that our, that work for the board this, this year is to clarify the vision?
And then, we're talking about the lenses and what we're doing, everything that we should do should be supportive of that vision and mission.
Absolutely.
I agree.
That's a good point, clarify vision and mission, just so that.
And actually, now that I look at this, I'm like, I'm wondering if these two are kind of one.
No, no. So clarify vision and mission, you know, maybe rewrite the whole thing, I don't know if, yeah. But then, how do we, you know, incorporate that as well? Was there another thought there? I'll, I'll, I'll put one up there in jeopardy of stepping on a committee's toes. Do we think that it's important for the board to hold a fundraising, a major fundraising activity coming here? I'm not saying write it down yet, I'm saying, could we think, and maybe the fundraising chair could talk about.
So my question back, what do we need the money for? What do we need the money for? Why would we wanna do one?
Well, it, to me, you know, there's lots of things coming in the future that are somewhat defined, but I, I would put it to loads of culture. Is there something that we could do from a fundraising perspective that would help with teacher engagement and teaching, teaching and culture?
Again, I'll go back to the vision and mission, so I will prioritize that above, you know, culture.
Well, so I, I think, I think that we, you know, being, being past the fundraising chair and struggling with it, I think we should do an annual fundraising campaign. There, there clearly are things that the school needs and it can't afford now, but I think that the fundraising should be targeted toward a specific goal in support of the school and in support of the students, so it shouldn't be, we're doing an annual fundraising campaign to put money just into the general fund. We should do, I think, we should do a fundraising
Yeah, yeah.
Campaign to
About teacher retention. To retain teachers.
Yeah, for the purpose of retaining teachers to give an additional trade, not, not salary, not that, but something in support of the teachers so that they can become better teachers. But in looking to the administrative
A to F on level five.
Yeah.
We should continue to do an annual campaign because we need to keep the practice doing.
Practice, that's right, yeah.
That, that should be done in a way that supports cultural healing.
Yeah.
And we do have a plan in place where we've got this mini-grant program that Mary Ann has initiated, and we can fund it through this campaign, so.
And I would challenge whether it should be culture or mission, because mission could go to, if, if we refine the mission to be including going to one-to-one or something like that, we could be doing it for that. I, I don't wanna just get focused on culture here, that everything we need to do has to be about this healing process.
Well, we have to agree on that.
Yeah, you're challenging, I'm challenging whether everything has to be about the healing process. Bringing another foreign language into the school if we decide that that is, you know, a good thing collectively.
Go ahead, Melissa.
I would just, I would have to, you know, agree with Tom that we have to have a balance. I think that we have cultural issues that we have to address, but we should always be focused on the mission and the vision of the school and looking forward in everything that we do at an annual basis to support what we wanna see happen at the school in five years and 10 years. So I, I think that you not, you might not necessarily look at it from a cultural lens, but improving the culture will help us get to where we wanna be, so I think it'll support our mission and vision actually.
Why? I actually think that flipping it around also, to Tom's point, that doing, if we really focus on this, the vision and mission, I think some of the factions are being this is non-clarified.
I'm sorry.
And that actually would help, I think if we really can clarify the vision and mission, it would go a long way towards helping with cultural healing, because some of the factions in the dispute is that this is not clear. So I don't think there'd be, you know, so it's really
Mary Ann, you had your, in a long time, you were patient with it.
Well, no, that's okay, because basically Pauline just said it, I, I completely agree with Tom. I, one of the, the parts of the culture that's still problematic are the unknowns. I mean, that, that's something that's continuing to create anxiety, number one. Number two, is everybody needs to rally around something in common, which is, you know, we're all kids, it's kids. Every, at the end of the day, it's just about kids. And so, having that mission and that vision that's focused on the students gives us all that common thing to be looking at, and we know the direction that we're, that we're all headed. And so, I agree, I think that some aspects of our culture will shift, and, you know, we may find, this is so hard, but, you know, we need to know where we want to go. And when we know that, then also, because this, this, although we have some people who've been here a while, I've done some quick things by hires by year, I mean, we've had tremendous turnover a, a, all through these 10 years and new additions. So it's constantly been evolving, and I think it's been evolving because people have been trying to figure out if they fit or they don't fit when they've come, right? And so, how do you know if you fit if you don't know where it's going? So how do you know about the culture? So I actually think that having this strategic plan when we can get it in place, and having this vision and mission, so that our goals then constantly relate to that, when we're planning our budget, it relates to where we wanna go, when we're planning our fundraising, it relates to where we, everything feeds back to the mission and vision, so I completely agree with Tom.
I'm gonna be the devil's advocate here, 'cause, you know, in consulting, we talk about doing strategic plans for big, big companies with line workers all over the place. And if I think of the teacher as the front line of AMSA, what motivates the teacher as the front line of AMSA is to be able to work with their colleagues on a day-to-day basis and enjoy going into the brain, right? And enjoy the experience they're getting with the kids. I think they like the experience they're getting with the kids and they feel empowered to do good, but what's missing is that experience with their colleague, right, to a large extent. And I've never seen vision and mission help that experience within six months, but I have seen it help in the long term, so I do think it's something that's important, that it will help us align things up. But announcing a very, the best vision and mission to the teachers is not gonna help them get through what they're going through too.
Please recognize, I, I agree.
It's just not gonna do it.
No, I totally agree that that's a, that, that, that a huge component is what's happening between them relationship-wise, but I also could say, you know, 'cause I've heard it from multiple people, is the unknowns are a stressor. And, and people saying, we don't even know where we're headed, we don't even know where we're going, and with, with certain, with people having conversations about, I don't know if I wanna stay here, have no idea of where we're going, what we're about anymore, those are stressors. And, and to, to have people unknown and looking at one another, and those be the focus, without being able to say to everybody, we get where you're coming from, but we know why we're here, let's try to help to shift our attention to what we all have in common, which is why we're here, the kids, that will help drive where, where it is we wanna go. And so, I, I, it's not gonna be the fix, and nothing's gonna happen in six months, the wounds are way too deep. But I think that having something to rally around and at least taking one of the unknown pieces right now and fixing it. And within a month, having, or two months, having two more components, the ED and the principal position settled, I think those three things that, that could be knocked off this spring would really help in the near future.
Rick, so, so on the one hand, I, I honestly do agree with everybody. 'Cause I think everybody is, in, in, in some sense, saying some of this, a lot of the same things, but there are some distinctions. So I, I'll just throw this out as a model. So I think one question is, what do we focus on going forward, right? And I, I think it isn't just one, it isn't just vision and mission, and it's not just culture, and it's not just anything. And so, I, I'll just share, I don't talk offhand with folks about this a little bit, but when we think about strategic planning, one really healthy model to use is you view what, how you invest your time, your resources, et cetera, as a portfolio. So just like you would do a financial investment, you put some in growth and you put some in conservative and you put some in whatever, and you decide a percentage of allocation. Same way, when you as an organization are deciding what to focus on, you commit to certain, focus a certain amount on this, that, and the other thing, and if you're gonna only spend 50%, I'm just giving this as a hypothetical, on vision and mission or whatever, you're only gonna spend 50% on it, but you assure you spent another X amount of time on those other key critical things you've committed yourself to. So I think if we see or plan from that perspective, I think that'll be helpful, speaking of, you know, our priorities and so forth. What are the high priorities and what do we assure we're going to focus on? I think another
New, new hand.
No, no, I'm just, I'm just raising that I've been
Yeah, did you?
Ken, let, let Rick finish, don't, don't let my hand raise, interrupt Rick.
So that's one aspect. The second I thought you were finished. Oh, so, so the second aspect is, you know, there's vision and mission, we're saying we wanna really focus that, and I do agree, it'll help clarify a lot of issues, though there are certain problems in terms of the factions that exist, that will not be necessarily taken care of by those, right? It's, if there, if, you know, take care of some of the issues, it won't take care of another. And so, I think it is important to focus on culture from two perspectives. One is, as a standalone thing, we need to be very conscious of it and do activities or whatever's necessary to help move it forward, but I think we need to keep it as a constant lens, maybe not on everything, but on a lot, because I know from feedback we have with teachers and students, they said we don't feel like stakeholders. We don't feel everybody's a stakeholder. I think if there are a few critical aspects of culture we use as a lens when we're developing these things, I think it's gonna be helpful. And so, I, I do think we need to have culture, it doesn't mean everything is, oh, how does this heal the school, but we have to keep thinking very cognizantly about how are we treating others as stakeholders and not making them feel left out, 'cause we're, it's very easy for us to get too insulated, and that's one of the complaints people have, too insulated, we're too floppy, we're not connected, we don't see people and their involvement in all of us as a community.
Teacher engagement.
Yeah. Yeah, go ahead. We have 10 minutes left?
10 minutes, please.
For brainstorming on strategic priorities. So in 10 minutes, whatever's on the board are the things that we're gonna think about focusing on for the coming year.
Okay. I like, Rick, the model that you just gave relative to sort of, almost like a balanced portfolio in a sense, maybe, where we decide to allocate our resources. But there's a piece for me, which is a little bit about the tangible and the intangible. And, and maybe the tangible is the mission and vision and all those things that we need to do to make sure that we have the right structure in place, and then there's short-term and long-term planning. And then there's a piece for me, which is around perception. And so, there's all the things that we wanna do to make sure that we're following them, the mission and, and, and the vision, but then there's a perception piece, which is maybe people aren't feeling it. So what we, in my sense, what we need to do is also address that, which may be some of that short-term, we just need to do this now, and, and maybe it's working in conjunction with Mary Ann or the ED for some period of time or for some focused event, whatever it happens to be. But it may just be to make people feel from a perception standpoint that, yes, we're hearing, we're listening, and meanwhile, we still have our mission and vision in our library that. There's some other things that we need to do too, just to make people realize that, oh yeah, we get it, you know?
So I would, I would almost call that, and I don't wanna say a lens of engagement, but I think engagement, right? So, you know, we've heard from the department chairs. I, I think that, you know, we may think of as work for the board to do this year is engagement with teachers. So a goal is to engage, you know, with teachers. First, to make sure that they understand that we care, we're spending time, we're listening, and it's a slippery slope to be engaging, you know, with teachers, because, you know, we get crossed up pretty easily and get into operational mode, and hear all kinds of things we're not gonna do anything about, but would it be
And rights issues that we're involved in.
And maybe so it's, yeah, teacher-on-teacher question, but is there, is there something that we could do in terms of a goal is to increase engagement with staff? And, and that's, you know, that's a perception thing, but it's also a reality that, that staff are asking for it and yearning for as stakeholders to know that the board is listening. So I would say, I think we should write it up here as a potential, and then we can begin to prioritize these. begin to prioritize these, I've nominated, staff engagement. I'd like it to have a, not me intended, but as a specific goal for the board. Number five.
Number five, so number five, I agree.
Yeah, yeah. Realizing that it's, and, and I, you know, I think it's teaching staff. And it's not parents. And I'm excluding some parents, including myself in the room, but I think it's more important to work with teachers at this point. Okay, go ahead.
So the way I see this, we're having to do three things. We're having to create a vision, this view, and a vision is, is a statement of what we want to be, it's a B. And it's, this B statement then allows us to look at the second thing, which is strategies. What strategies are we gonna carry out? What are we going to do to achieve that B statement? And then we have to align resources to carry out those strategies to achieve that vision. That's why what Tom said before, you know, about, you know, culture is not as important as the vision. Culture is important certainly, but if you have that vision, then culture becomes a part of that. Now, in terms of your stakeholder engagement, okay, then if you have a clear vision and a set of strategies and you start working to align resources to carry out those strategies, then you can also reach out to others and say, here is our vision of what is to be. And this may be broad-brushed at the board level, at the committee level, at the administration level, at the student level, at the teacher's level, they may be more refined, but they're looking at that larger thing. That's where, you know, in terms of engagement, if we're lacking something, it's that, and what we're talking about doing is looking at that vision. That vision allows, that envisioning process allows us to do a whole bunch of things. It allows us to look at strategies that we need to achieve and do our own job of lining resources. But it also allows us to do that stakeholder engagement.
So you're advocating that vision and vision refinement are important to do as a first step?
Well, it, it is...
You're putting together a model as well, mental model, think about why, how.
Well, so what I hear is that we're talking in terms of what we need to do, and vision is not what we need to do. Strategies are what you do. A vision is a B statement, a state of being.
So are you advocating that we should be refining vision and mission as an activity?
And, and also being clear about what that activity is, not just, not just we need to define vision, excuse me, not just that we need to define what AMSA's vision is or what the board's vision is, but take, to, to clarify what language we're using. Because I hear us talking about vision and here's what we need to do in the same sentence, and that vision isn't what you do.
Isn't anything to do other than to create vision.
It's, 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 it's where we want to go.
So is that clear?
Yeah.
That's what we are talking about.
So I'd like to...
Yeah. Go ahead, Roger.
Yeah, I think in, in, in working through, especially in the last year, I think there's, one of the big things that we can do as a board is to eliminate unknowns. And Mary Ann get on it, I think other board members get on it. We need to get an ED hired, we need to support the hiring of the principal, eventually be supporting the hiring of an assistant principal long-term. We need to also, that's, that's one level of unknowns. So just the general category, anything where we as a board via policy, via actions can eliminate unknowns will help. That's a lot of things that I was hearing...
From the staff.
From the staff and from the parents that, I don't know what's going on, what's going on with the, with the principal search, what's going on with the ED search, what's going on with the fussy. Anyplace where we as a board can take action to eliminate unknowns, we should do it. If, if it falls in our, if it falls in our policy or that we should delegate to the appropriate authority to make those unknowns disappear or contain them. I think we also should really look at, you know, we have a lot of stuff on our plate. I, I'd like the portfolio model to say, to help us constrain ourselves so that we do not get into the diet of trying to do everything, because if we try to do everything, we will fail. Third, I think I'd like to push back, Craig, on your idea of staff engagement as a, as a strategic goal for the board, I don't, I think that's misplaced.
Not a strategic, a one-year?
Even a one-year goal.
Okay.
I think it's, I think, I think engagement should, could be a goal, but it's a very slippery slope and could lead us into many wrong places. But I think we should find ways to get that feedback, you know, via third-party assessment.
Board representation from the staff?
You know, board representation, there, there are other ways, I think.
May I jump in on one?
Please.
What I, the way I see that happening is faculty engagement, you know, as we talk about strategic planning, I, I think that, I know somebody asked it before, I'm just gonna give you my opinion, is that it's, it's not a, 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 or a vision, it's not the ED's, it's not the board, it's, it's a collective community, you have to have representatives from, from all the stakeholders in defining your vision and your mission. And the faculty engagement, those are things that I think we can do and that we can report to the board of, well, look, here's what our thoughts are about values, here's what our thoughts are about vision, so that when it comes to creating that vision or, or, you know, solidifying it, you've had the engagement of the stakeholders. That's sort of how I see that playing into, as an example for how you can engage. And, and, and attending things that shows that, that gets back to that support thing I mentioned earlier that I was trying, that what I was trying to make is, that's how I see potential for chipping away at some of the cultural divide by support, by presence and just feeling that, oh, we're running this event or the kid's doing this and somebody, some board members come, maybe that's a support to the culture and showing that you understand some of the things that they're working on and going through. I'm sorry, I'm not quite...
So...
I would recommend that we take goal number one from last year and just roll it over to this year because that's the increased transparency and visibility with all stakeholders. It speaks to some of what we're, what we're saying is to get in front of them, to be out there. I think transparency is still a critical portion of what we need to do in eliminating some of those unknowns.
I think they've asked for that as well in terms of the faculty heads, they're, they're looking for that. Faculty heads are looking for that, the chairs, everybody is. So maybe we could do it more organized. We actually have a sign-up list amongst the board for the events and make sure that one or two people on the board are attending, make it more of an organized thing.
So I think you're nominating increased transparency and visibility.
Well, before we get into the goals, can we read on what these are? And I think there's an outstanding question as to why those go up here.
Well, I think we're gonna, we're gonna figure out which, which one of these make it to the list, right? These are nominating categories right now.
Okay.
So maybe what we did, what we did last year was we kinda gave everybody three votes and they got to take this up.
Can you add increased transparency and visibility?
So she's nominated.
She's waiting for number one up on the screen to be added to the board.
Suggesting number six be increased transparency and visibility.
There's four, I mean, partially that fact.
Yeah, yeah. So I would, for vision and mission, Tom, I think you originally nominated this, I would like to add to it, clarify with stakeholder engagement. And I'm sure it's something we would intend to do, but I think...
We don't want to do that in a vacuum.
We don't want to do it in a vacuum, and I think it's, you know, it's, let's get the, the team together for this one.
With, on that same topic, and you and I actually talked about this, and everyone's been talking about like the vision and vision, I would actually say, we really don't have a vision at all. And instead of clarifying, I think we actually need to create. I mean, this, this vision that they have, I don't even think it's a vision.
Well, the vision starts out with, the mission is.
So...
That's the first, that's the first three words of the vision.
There's a difference between a vision and a vision statement, okay? A vision, you know, a vision is a picture, if you will. You know, you, you know, we have a vision statement that might need clarification and detailing and so forth. But I'm just suggesting we should not equate a vision, which is our picture of the future, with a vision statement. A vision statement is usually succinct, it's very high-level, a vision is, you know, much broader.
Sometimes it's easy to think about it in terms of vision meaning what and when. What do you want to be when you grow up and when do you want to be? Other times, from a mission standpoint, is how do you want to get there?
Yeah.
So those sort of three words sometimes is a what, when, or how, could help decide if it's a mission or vision.
Yes. So let's, I want to switch back to the agenda so we can all kind of figure out where we are. We are currently in brainstorming of additional priorities. It is 11 o'clock. Do we have lunch coming in? No.
Yeah, they want to refresh.
Refresh, okay. And, you know, by the, by the agenda, we have an hour and a half left. I don't know that we do, I think we have, I think we can accomplish what we need to accomplish in an hour. We've brainstormed some topics that are potential 2015 goal, I would say goal topics, we don't have specific goals there, but they're goal topics. What I think we can do is, if the board wants, we can spend a little bit of time here, discussion of strategic priorities. Or, or we can skip that. Or, or we can come back to it after we've finalized and voted on and selected our 2015 priorities.
I don't necessarily feel the need to discuss strategic priorities, you know, I have a couple of mine...
Yeah.
Right now, but I do think if we go to the portfolio, that we need to dedicate 5% of our time, 10% of our time to be like that going forward, so if we can agree on, if we could get almost all the way to agreeing on the portfolio percentages, that would be huge. So I, I will vote that I would like to hear everybody at least a first cut on the strategic priority. I have my own, but I'd, I'd be interested in hearing, you know, especially as a new board member, hearing what people are thinking, the strategic priorities, you know, ought to be laid out. I, I don't, I don't, I don't view that, hearing the strategic priorities as this, this exercise.
Right, no, they're very different.
But I would like to hear.
Okay. So on the board, is what we agreed as a board last year, a year ago, were the five strategic priorities? Just to, we haven't done it for this today, but this is what the board agreed to last year, were our, our strategic issues really, so more multi-year issues. And I don't know that these, that this wasn't the strategic plan at all, that these were the longer-term issues that we were facing. So is there consensus that the board would like to talk about the strategic priorities now, or would you like to try to finalize goals for this year first?
I like Ken's idea of just like going around stating...
So capturing some thoughts on strategic priorities. We have another board.
Without discussion.
No, we don't.
Happy to kind of capture.
So could I just add to that? So I, I agree, I think that's a worthwhile exercise to get it all out there. I think then to a couple other points, if we can have that model of that portfolio of how we want to allocate our efforts, I think it'll help then in prioritizing what we actually want to do in terms of goals.
So you're suggesting...
Let's go ahead with the brainstorm.
Okay, so I can capture them right here on, on line, on a brief ass paper. So let's start with Roger. If you want to, you know, one or two things that you think are, are...
I'd like to pass, I don't have a...
Okay. I, I will pass to him, okay.
Honestly, from my perspective, a lot of these are still relevant that we talked about. We haven't really discussed strategic planning since last year, and I think that I see it more as a goal for us to spend some time on it, Chris, that maybe it is an annual goal that we roll over, that we need to spend some time dedicated to this, whether it's quarterly or whatnot.
Yeah. All right. Going around the rest.
I'm gonna pass because I need some time to reflect and think, I'm sure.
Chris? I have three. One is continued board development, is just, you know, continuously improving our focus on our role and our skill at executing. The second is taking it, moving...